At six forty-five. Announcements, we have a call for volunteers, there's an opening on the Historical Housing Trust. Any other announcements?
If somebody, yeah.
Yeah, Shaffer. So, I'd like to take the next item out of order, action item E A, request for appointment of Dana Dennis to the Historical Commission. Are you able to scroll ahead to that?
Yeah.
Anything you'd like to say?
No, they asked me to join and I'm thrilled to do it. I think there were a couple of reasons, I was on the Historical District Commission fifteen years ago. Flip Robinson, late Flip Robinson and myself joined because we were trying to make our cluster of old homes way to the river in In-113. A select district. And put a tunnel work into it and it just didn't happen and I kind of lost, lost hope. And now I found out the state of Massachusetts is actually putting forth an effort to try to do the same. And so I think they reached out, I was getting annoyed that I had, I had worked in fifteen years ago. And my love of historical homes and architecture, kind of psychotically spent the last thirty years restoring my house. And I'm thrilled to do it. When I did it fifteen years ago, so I had four children in sports that were all in their grade school and high school years and working sixty hours a week as a physician, so it was also kind of hard to make the meetings, but now they're all grown, so I'm thrilled to do it. So the municipal board reached out and asked me and I went to, as a guest at the first two meetings, I had a lot to offer.
You guys are very good. Questions for you?
I think it's fantastic, I smile because the last thirty years of living in this house, you look older, I feel good about it. I guess I appreciate your interest to do it. I'll make a motion to appoint Dana Dennis to the Historic Commission for my show's term in twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-six.
So is this, sorry, is this an open seat or? And does that bring us up to full membership? Awesome. Can you further discussion?
I would just note, and Dana, you may know your relationships on the commission now, but in the last four or five years, the Historic, Historical Commission did do a bunch of work specifically on identifying other potential historic districts.
Yeah.
And you've probably seen it's all on their website, there's a kind of work that's been done, so that's a whole process that, you know, would need to be followed. Wendy and I were at a meeting, what, probably four or five months ago, with the Historic District Commission, and there was a little discussion of that, and it is a, you know, it is a big process, but in terms of aspirations, I would, I think it's fair to say that now there's several steps closer than it was, you know, when you were, you know, working on it.
You know, I know my neighbors in all the old houses, they're good friends of mine, and everybody's on, but we were four fifteen years ago. You know, physically people objected, it's hard to do, but the, the work they've done is fantastic. I read through all of it. I mean, they've, they've, there's a lot of history in that area, it's, I think people realize that that's the whole meeting house history in the sixteen hundreds, that the town of Newbury down, the first part of Newbury objected and one of them, they built a meeting house and wanted to tear it down, and there was a lot of conflict, and that's pretty interesting history, so, yeah, anyway.
Why didn't it fly fifteen years ago?
Well, so I, I was doing it myself, obviously I don't have the expertise most estate do. I don't know the name, but there's one house in our cluster that's, that's a nineteen fifty's ranch, and it's right next to Paul's house, Two Now, the oldest house. And I, I don't know if she's still there, she's a lovely lady, but I knocked on her door to talk about it. I didn't even get the words out of my mouth, and she said, absolutely not, I object, you're gonna make me tear my house down and build something historically correct. I said, nobody would ever do that, but that was her concern. And I was told that one person objects in all work. And so, you know, I did all the work and then it, it just, I, I sort of felt like I was in a, a roadblock. And kind of gave up, and, and then I heard about Macris and everything they're doing, reinvigorated my, my interest. And I don't know, I don't know the situation there with that house, whether, whether she's still there, whether that is an issue, I, I don't know. But all the people that live in the old houses, I think we're all, or we're all, you've seen what I, next door neighbor Steve and Diane, yeah, done with that house, the one that's kind of mustard color, it's beautiful, but.
Do you live on the way to the river?
Yeah, on the white, yeah. When I built my addition, because I have four kids, I, I'm kind of crazy, I mean, every single thing in the addition is over two hundred years old, my fireplace is seven feet wide, the bake oven, the bricks can't be three hundred year old house in Ipswich, I dug clay from the Merrimack River, it uses more than like they did in the seventeen century. No, 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 I mean, no case, we have, I have ten by ten hand-hewn beams in my kitchen that are two hundred years old, I hired a Penn Tuck at high school football team and put them up. I mean, it's, I have a whole big dock, but it's, it's kind of crazy. So I, I have a passion for it, so.
Sounds great.
And I think they're excited. Yeah, I think they're excited because I, I would, I would build that niche as somebody that lives in an old house and kind of that architecture niche, so. Oh, yeah.
All in favor? Right, so you touch base with Jim and, right?
Yes, I'm going to be involved with the IMA and all that.
Great, thank you guys very much, and thanks for giving me up, I could watch the dinner for much longer. It's two days' notice that I'm flying one from Virginia with his girlfriend, and my mic's taken off and I'm making the damn, so.
Thanks very much.
Happy, so, thank you, thank you, nice meeting you all.
Okay, go back to item A, public comment.
Why don't we make one, the house you referred to, that was recently done, most gorgeous house in the street.
I like his house better.
The musty, well.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
They did a nice job, Andrew Michael, so anyways.
All right.
That's the end of my public comment.
Thank you. All right, item B, Town Manager Updates. Before you get started, I just wanted to share with the two of you that Angus and I talked about trying to reduce the amount of stuff in a packet, both for his state and ours. So our suggestion is that people email around things, information as it becomes available, and if there's anything you would like discussed at the meeting, reach out to Angus, we'll put it on the agenda, as long as you are both all right with that approach. So we'll be getting stuff real time, instead of every two weeks getting a huge block of stuff.
Okay, that's fair.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah, no, that's good, that's, that's fine, that's, yeah, it's easier to take in, to digest in small bits.
Yeah, so if I just send something out that says FYI, if, if any one of you say, hey, let's add that for discussion, just send me a note, and we'll make sure that gets, you know, conveyed to the chair.
Great, thanks.
So first item staff in transition, so we had our new conservation agent Clay Hutchinson, started on Monday, and our new land and building services administrator Jan Geary also started on Monday. So that's been a major focus this week of getting both of them onboarded. It's been really, really positive, they're excellent new hires, they're both bring with them a lot of experience, relevant experience from prior municipal work and it's, it's, even though it's only been a few days, you can already see like, you know, working relationships gelling and and both of them bringing their own knowledge and experience to bear to our situations, it's obviously going to take a while for each of them to get up to speed on, on many, many things going on, but it's a pretty dynamic time and both I and my immediate staff, as well as other kind of core land use staff are all going out of their way to make sure that the, the new staff know what they need to know about some of the very present and imminent issues, as well as, you know, giving actual tours around town to help, help both of them get oriented, get the, the lay of the land, so. Dynamic time, there's going to be, obviously, there's always some, you know, transition, takes some time to fully ramp up, but I think we're off to a really good start. And but yeah, there's, there's a lot, a lot to be, you know, a lot to learn, not just on the, the town specific stuff, but just on some of the mechanics of website updates. Jen is going to have a major role with that, with building, planning, conservation and CPA. And thankfully, has worked with Civic CMS in the past, it's, it's been a couple of years, but she's worked with it, so we've, Jim has set up a training next week for focused on the two of them, but available to all staff as a refresher for training of the website, there's some, we've set up a training on, there's a mobile GIS app, there's a lot of things just to, to, to help get them kind of fully onboarded, so I think it's off to a great start. The other side of the coin, as you know, we got the notice that Sue Brown, Town Planner, is retiring and moving with her family down Florida. We did post the Town Planner position last Wednesday, Sue's, last day, it's a week from today, the eighth. And so I've been working with her, working on the planning board chair, in fact, yesterday afternoon, you met with Ray, Wendy sat in for that as well. Primarily to do with the joint meeting coming up on Tuesday. But I've got a call with Ray tomorrow to really walk through the, kind of the, you know, recruiting hiring process for a new town planner, we've already got a few applications and we may start interviews this early, it's late next week, but it wouldn't be much past that in any case, so.
When is Sue finishing up here?
A week from today, is her last day, so, you know, some of her key projects are, are at or close to the finish line, like the housing production plan, others like the MBTA communities. You know, we've got another, you know, year or more ahead of us, so. In some, you know, but one thing from a permitting standpoint, the Eagles NAST division, that was really the only development that had been before the planning board in recent months. That has been acted upon by the planning board, we are working with Town Council to finalize review of some of the legal documents, covenants, things like that, so. Planning Board's meeting Tuesday, so it's like almost done, but not quite, it's voted, but it's not, you know, there's still the details, so. But thankfully, we have, you know, good people on staff to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks. And we are hopeful that we'll, you know, hire a terrific new town planner who will, you know, not, not miss a beat, so. And we also, I think you guys know, but in case you don't, Jane Crafton has announced her retirement in August, so we posted that position, I spoke with Bob, with Health, the Board Health, the Appointing Authority for Health Staff under the legislation, so I kind of advised Bob on how I'd like to see that handled, but they are the Appointing Authority, so. You know, we'll, we'll try to coordinate that the best we can. So that's what I have for staff in transitions. Pending procurement process, Middle Street Bridge, I put some items in a packet, we had a really really good meeting this morning, it was a lengthy, very substantive meeting, we had all the key people. Obviously, on our side, we had Caitlin Barker, Butch, Jenny. And we also have Tom McInnany, our, who's the attorney at KP, who's, who had reviewed the bid docs back in the spring, and he's really their procurement and contracting expert, at least the one assigned to us, he's been good to work with over the, over the years. And he was very, very helpful in today's remote meeting. On the city side, they had Wayne, John Eric, Tom Kusick was on there, as well as Andrew Levine, the Minister Chief of Staff. And, you know, I won't bore you with the details, it's a lengthy procurement, there's a lot of nuts and bolts, I've been working with Caitlin on, on that. And that was a big focus this week to make sure we were really ready for the meeting. We will be circulating an updated draft invitation for bid by the end of tomorrow. We, even though it had already been through legal review, you know, when we sent it around again a week and a half ago after the council had voted, you know, it seemed like once the council voted, it kind of renewed the focus of the city staff, so like John Eric had gotten us a bunch of detailed comments, so it's taking time to look at all that, so.
We said that will, we integrate those comments, will be integrated hopefully tomorrow?
Well, they're all there, so Caitlin sent me a draft yesterday morning reflecting all of that. I haven't had time to review it, so I'm not going to send it around there until I personally review it, so. So I gotta get that done tomorrow, but yes, I did say to the group that I would send it around by the end of tomorrow. Because we're looking for any remaining comments, there sure really shouldn't be any, because everyone's seen it. By the end of next week, we are aiming for issuing it on or around Monday, August twelfth, which is a week from Monday, so. Yeah, there's not a lot of time, but we're, I think we're in really good shape. But some of the things we talked about today were, were kind of how the cash flow is going to work, how the invoices are going to be processed. You know, what order we're going to hit, there's, there's one, two, three, four grant sources. Plus our, plus the local appropriation, plus we're going to need an appropriation from the city, so there's a lot of details. And I guess what was so positive to me about today's meeting was, first of all, we walked through all of the issues. But secondly, it's just very clear that now, since the council endorsed the IMA, it, it feels like a real project, like everyone's positive as we are doing this, and as you know, it's a long time, and we didn't know if we'd ever get to that point, and so it's made it really cool to be part of a meeting where it's not an if, but a when kind of thing, so, but yeah, there's, there's a hundred details. You know, some of the thorny, really, I think the only real thorny issue is you know, let's say the bid comes in and there's significant margin between the bid and what we're working with as the assumed cost. Great, but if the bid, if the low bid comes in and it's like right pumping up against that, we gotta think really hard about do we award a contract, because the, the council, their vote set a cap, and granted, we could go back to them and ask for more, but I think they were pretty clear about their cap. We will talk more probably later tonight, but certainly this summer and early fall, you know, my recommendation is going to be that we put a placeholder on for the fall town meeting. As kind of a, a stopgap that if, if the bids come in and we need more money, we at least have the opportunity to ask our voters, but, you know, I don't want to get ahead of myself, because we don't know what the bids are and there is a very healthy contingency.
The contingency comes in close with that contingency, there's a problem.
Well, yeah, but keep, keep in mind, those numbers were, you know, generated
Twenty-three.
In twenty-three, right, so I, I, we're all hopeful, and, and I think, I don't, I don't I, I think, I think it's going to come in, I think it's going to be okay, but these are all the things, the way John Eric put it, because he's, he's really pressing these issues, he you know, he kind of said he looks at things from zero to infinity and wants to think of every, like, he wants to think of every potential you know, contingency. And, and that we're not in a situation where we've awarded a contract and a change order comes in and there's no appropriation and the contractor's sitting there on their hands, and you know, that's the, we can't allow that to happen, obviously, so.
So do they have any sense of what the reports timeline is for appropriating?
Yeah, so, so Andrew said he didn't see any reason not to just get that right into the queue now.
Yeah.
And get that onto council agenda, their process would be, it would, it would be referred to a committee. It would then kind of stay in committee until the bids are open and there's an actual amount. We all agreed that they, the council should be asked to appropriate the full amount that they authorized.
Yeah.
So that even if the bids come in lower, that there's not that a need for a second vote when those change orders come in, so that's what we're going to be seeking. Just like you've done, you've appropriated just over, you know, a million twenty-five, we might not need all that, but it's there if we need it, so. Yeah, so that's going to be introduced soon. Assuming you guys will, you know, later tonight to reendorse the IMA with a couple of changes the council voted. I'm going to have a couple of signed copies, you know, printed in the morning, and I haven't even ruled out asking Max to actually physically bring them over there and not leave, so he also gets the. Just get it signed, get it done, just, we're, obviously, we're not issuing the invitation for bid until we have a fully executed agreement from the mayor, so. Not expecting any drop, sorry, but we, we want to make sure. So anything on, on the bridge? More movement, more movement. Let's see, oh yeah, so this maybe should have been under more discussion items, because it's a little more than an update, it's basically, so I wanted to just update you, we continue, we're in touch with Greenbelt pretty often on just trying to pin down when they're going to get the NOI file for the trails on the Concom Street project. And so you see in the packet, the recent correspondence with Dave Remmer, but he also asked in there about the site name, so I don't know if you want to spend a minute or two now as to.
Can you update, I don't even know what this whole project is, to be honest, it's kind of been presented when I've been on the board, so.
Yeah, well, it's really, there's a lot of history, and I'll, I'll give you the, kind of the ten thousand foot view, and, and I think as I talk, you'll, you'll probably, you'll ring a bell, because you were probably, you might have been at a town meeting when it was actually voted.
Sure you were, you, you, you know more about it than you think you know.
But if you could also just update on the current status, because people are asking, when, when can we use the property?
Yeah, 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 definitely, so, so this is the, this is the property here, it includes this, 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 and this. But the portion owned by Greenbelt is this, this, and this, so this is, but you know, the general area. So it was the area that was the subject of the potential forty B, the developers.
Solar panels.
Yeah, solar panels further, well, further, further ago. The developers purchase and sale agreement lapsed. A neighborhood group was established, they, they created an LLC, Save Our Wetlands LLC. They approached the former owner after the PMS had lapsed, got the property under agreement. Approached Greenbelt, they actually approached me first, I put them in touch with Greenbelt, and then they quickly came back to us, it went to town meeting later that spring, this was another one of these things that came together on lightning fast time. And, and a lot of things were pushed aside, made it happen on that timeline. But the, and I, I can't describe right now the exact mechanics, there was a combination of ownership, conservation restrictions, lands that was owned by Save Our Wetlands LLC, with a CR on it, it's very complicated how it was all structured.
And most of the easement. It's a CR and then in one case, an easement per trail. Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, yeah, so, so some of the current dynamics, so, so Dave Remmer has previously said to me, the public can go on it now, it's, they own it, like there's, but they haven't improved the trails and part of the part of the plan all along has been improvement of our trails network. And some of those trails are within wetland resource areas and therefore need to go through the Concom, so that's been really a delay for a while as to when is Greenbelt going to file, get the wetlands still needed and go to Concom with the notice of ten. And we're in touch every one to three months, and it's always, oh, it's on our list, it's on our list. He now is, is saying they are going to file this fall. Related and of, of significant relevance to us is the Portland Lane right-of-way, and Chris, if you take a look at the map, and you may remember this.
I know this.
Your time on the planning board, so this is part of the publicly accepted right-of-way. One thing we learned in all of this was the Portland Lane had been accepted by town meeting in two thousand and six, but the street acceptance plan hadn't ever been recorded. So that lapsed, so we had to bring it back to town meeting to help them re-accept Portland Lane, this, this thing's been that, but we did all that, and we got it recorded, and it is public.
So there's no wetlands up there, right?
No, there's no wetlands here, but what we've said, the position we've taken going back a couple of years is we would, we would coordinate the timing of the construction, the parking and the improvement of this trail area, as well as the fencing that Greenbelt has agreed to put in with the timing of when they're actually improving the trails, so that there's not a trail nowhere. So we, we're not bound by that, but that's, that is what we've been saying consistently, including to the neighbors going back a couple of years.
Is this some encroachment?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's encroachment from this house.
You can probably see.
Yeah. So we did work with Town Council on that a couple of years ago, and it is, and one of the other things that's on our, kind of, I don't even think it's actually on the list, but it's, it's in our head. Is, you know, it was recommended that at some point we offer this property owner a license agreement to allow that infrastructure to stay on the town right-of-way. The benefit being it would eliminate the nightmare having to relocate that infrastructure. But a license agreement is revocable at any time, so it would also be a clear message to the owner that you don't in fact own that land, you don't in fact have rights to that land. We're going to let you continue to leave your subsurface infrastructure there, but it's a revocable agreement. And an advantage to doing that for the town would be to ensure it doesn't become an adverse possession situation, because it would be, you know, clearly documented that, you know, it's, it's not open in the tortoise's, but basically the clock on that was all reset when the street was re-accepted and the street acceptance plan was recorded, so.
What exactly are we looking at here, is that a transformer pad or just?
No, no, it's not a transformer pad, there's, there are three, I think two of their pedestals, one, there's Verizon, Comcast and Electra. Three, three, three separate pedestals, and I don't remember which one, or there might be two of them that are actually out in town land, that was shown there on my maps, may not be perfectly accurate. But, but there are.
Well, there, there are.
It's very close, because you'll, you'll recall, Rick, we did at, at one point, through all this process, we, we got us, we got it surveyed.
Yeah.
And it turned, like, if you look at the mine map from a few years ago, it showed the, the right-of-way basically. So this is the right-of-way.
Yeah, so.
It shows it kind of going like this. And when the survey was done, it was clear that that's not the case, so when we got the survey planned, we shipped that off to MBPC and got it built in, so it's, it's probably more accurate in this particular section of my map, mine, they're probably anywhere else in town, because it is, they did approximate the survey.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, that's great.
There's clearly stuff there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's no question there's stuff there, so, so some other dynamics. So the Select Board had previously voted to really direct Public Works to construct two off-street unpaved gravel parking spaces. Greenbelt has agreed to put in fencing, we have never seen a physical plan, and I've continued to have questions over the last several years, and I've had a conversation both with the board and with Greenbelt. I'd like to know exactly how the fencing is going to be configured, what it's going to be constructed of, I have my own vision of, of what would be good, but.
Fencing for what reason?
Basically, a benefit I see to fencing is that the because there has been encroachment for all this time, and because we do know there is some, I will say, lack of support of, of this parking and trail, I do not want people who, from the public, who are a hundred percent entitled to park here and to walk here, to feel that they are trespassing on private property, they're not, they're on public property. So I think a fence like that.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, there's probably, yeah, so, so I think something like a, you know, like a nice split rail fence that kind of establishes this. You know, and it wouldn't be right along with property line, or it could be, but, but something that clearly distinguishes public from private, I think is very important, so that future visitors to this site, which the town invested significant money in preserving, don't, aren't made to feel that they are trespass.
I get the concept of split rail, that makes.
Yeah, yeah, well, the other reason why something like split rail in particular would probably be good is with a, with center posts that, or, you know, posts towards the center that are easily removable, and the rails easily removable is because the parcel to the left is owned by Ting and Powell. You know, Nancy Powell and Albert Ting, and, and they have an obligation through the enrollment of the parcel in sixty-one, was it B, sixty-one B for Forestry to periodically perform certain operations on, on the land and there, so they whatever other thoughts they might have, they have an obligation to, to access that land periodically, and they have a right to use the town right-of-way for that access.
That's right.
A real fence, but.
Exactly, they pull the rails out, the poster, put it in such a way that you can just pull them out, set them, lay them down, and then you can get a piece of equipment or if you.
And that's even if there is even a kind of a north south one, because there doesn't even need to be necessarily. And, and that's even if there is even a kind of a north south one, because there doesn't even need to be necessarily.
Yeah.
That's why I'd like to really get from Greenbelt, like exactly what fencing, exactly where's the trail gonna go. Uh, cause we've never, ever seen a, a physical plan. We've been out there, we've walked it with them several times. Uh, but we've never actually seen a physical plan. But yeah, Rick, Rick's point, that was gonna be the last point I was gonna make before I stopped talking this, uh. So they have an approved forestry management plan. They have an absolute right to cross and re-cross. We did confirm that with town council a few years ago when it was brought to attention. And, uh, they, in fact, Albert actually approached Butch about in the last two weeks. I don't know if you're aware.
Yeah, he mentioned.
Yeah, but about wanting to basically. Cross that just so everyone's aware they can. Um, and so they can, and I went through a roll of Butch, made sure he understands that they have a right to do that. I did ask as a courtesy that before they do that, that they let me know, because I would wanna let the neighbors know, not because. It's up to them, but just as a courtesy, because I have maintained, uh, pretty regular contact with these, these two owners. Uh, and, uh, provided them updates, uh, sometimes on my initiative, sometimes on theirs. Every so often they'll email me, say, hey, when's this gonna happen? Cause it's been very clear they don't want it to happen. Uh, but, you know, it's important to communicate. And so I, I wouldn't want. And, you know, them out there and me get an angry phone call, I would rather give them a, as a courtesy. Hey, that's gonna, they're gonna be out there tomorrow or next week.
That's why you gotta get the fencing though.
Yeah, like we gotta get it, we gotta, gotta get it resolved.
So can I stretch this out to another level that you probably don't wanna hear? So say yes and then I'll say.
Yeah.
Um, the property just to the, this would be the west of this, cause the other open space the town owns, which comes in off of River Road.
It's not just to the west, it's to the north.
Uh, I was thinking it was west.
Oh, the, uh, Hoffagle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's north on the other side.
Yes, yeah.
Right there.
There.
So there is no connectivity.
No.
What's the slipper between?
Oh, we don't wanna go there.
Yeah, we do.
That's.
That's the one that they, uh.
It's owned by a bank or, yeah.
Yeah, it's owned by a bank.
So maybe, I'm thinking, is there any way to get access to connect through?
Yeah.
The deep grooves to that one and.
This has been like a long conversation. And it's, right now it's not high low, but that's the long term.
Well, I think with the properties all they have to tie them all together is.
Yeah, that, that was part of the conversation.
Doesn't sound like a good conversation.
Well, it, it just couldn't happen, but it's part of the overall plan. Couldn't happen on the timeline, I guess.
Oh no, I'm not saying on this, I'm just.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, well, 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 longer term, it's an aspiration.
Yeah. Any, uh, thoughts on the name?
I'm fine with what was.
Ecology and conservation.
Yeah, alright. We don't need to vote on that, do we, Angus?
No, no, that's fine.
Alright, any?
Cause it's their parcel. Their land.
But they asked us.
Right, no, no, but that's why we don't need to vote. It's not actually our, our town's land.
Uh, any other updates, Angus?
A couple of other, just, uh, kind of brief updates. We did execute a contract, uh, in the last week and a half, two, two contracts. One with, uh, ecological land management for the, uh, invasive species. Uh, we got some, uh, helpful feedback from, from, uh, you know, different people and that's all now under contract and is actually underway. Uh, Ronnie Collins out there this week working with Butch and, uh, and Paul's been helpful in marking the four hundred. Uh, four hundred and twenty-five offset from the, uh, reservoir, uh, cause there's, there's certain restrictions there, so. Uh, that's been a good process. Uh, we signed a contract actually last Friday, uh, so that's, that was, uh. Allowed everything to go forward as scheduled. We also signed a contract with GEI last week that as needed. Uh, hourly further rip the road, so they are now a resource to us. They're under contract. Uh. Uh, we haven't called them enough to do anything, but they're there and.
Also, also, uh. Limitation.
I said not to exceed a fifteen. I've been talking ten and I didn't wanna get into, if things really heat up. I didn't wanna get into a situation in September or early October where. We fall off a cliff and we have to extend it, you know, I, so I figured fifteen gave us a little more, uh, breathing room. I don't think we'll use anything close to that in the next couple of months, but you never know.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so not exceed fifteen. So there's another twenty-five that's, that's not, uh, spoken before. A couple of other updates. We had a, uh. Really good, uh, meeting, uh, also this morning with M, uh, MBPC on the commercial vehicle exclusion. Uh, that was with Butch and Christine, myself, um. Uh, I had Rebecca sit in on that one and they were like four or five staff from MBPC. Uh, so we have, and they, we had already confirmed they could do. And good and would be happy to do the traffic counts. They are actually doing the whole. A to Z of commercial vehicle exclusion in another town. Currently, they've done others in the last couple of years. And the price they ballparked us to do the whole thing was so, we're. Reasonable. Uh, I said, geez, like we're gonna, so they're gonna get us, uh, proposals to do, to do the whole thing. And I said, yeah, we're gonna help, but, but like two thousand dollars. Yeah, so I was like, yeah, get us a proposal. They'll get us a proposal just to do the counts. And a proposal to do the whole thing, but I think in the interest of bandwidth.
Yeah.
That would be a huge plus, uh, for the River Road. We also spent some time talking with them about Ash Street. And, uh, uh, so later this morning after the meeting, Rebecca found there was in fact a commercial vehicle exclusion. In nineteen ninety-six for Ash Street. Uh, so I think what we're gonna do and what we're gonna need to do in this, in that case is update that one. Not, we'll probably have to start from scratch, cause I think the standards are very different than they were, uh, you know, thirty years ago. But, um.
So is that why it's not able to be enforced?
No, it seems like, well, so, so the follow-up, I, I asked Rebecca to do what she's working on is, uh. I wanna understand exactly why these tickets have been overturned specifically. It's been told to me that it's because the signage is. Either wrong location and or wrong size.
Yeah, they're like the size of a piece of paper.
Oh, I, yeah, just, and, yeah, she said.
The ramifications.
Well, the issue, uh, tickets being overturned, I haven't.
Oh, yeah, so, so Dwyer's been telling me over the, a couple of times over the years that. Like they have issued tickets for overweight vehicles. And when people have appealed those to the court, they can thrown out as unenforceable. So I've really been trying to drill down on that to understand exactly what's happening. So I wanna get my hands on exactly. Why they've been.
Well, he mentioned, cause I was at that conversation, he said, the guy went to court with a picture of the sign and said it's not reasonable to have seen the sign. So.
Yeah, or by the time, and or by the time they see the sign, they're already on top of the unpaid portion and there's no.
The signs are at the intersection of Middle Street and on the other end. I mean, they're at our appropriate intersection, but.
Alright.
The branches have been allowed to go in front of them and they are very small.
Okay, to their, their turn.
Yeah, so, so we, but we wanted, uh, so we talked, we, we spent probably, you know, ten or fifteen minutes or more. With MBPC kind of briefing them on that. We asked them to get us a proposal for each.
Great.
Uh, and what I think could work out is maybe we do the Ash Street one with the LTA hours. And then maybe funds the River Road one out of, out of the funds that were approved in the, uh, spring. I think it's gonna be modest amount of money. So that's real progress, uh, that, those are both, you know, really moving forward. Uh.
So is there? You know, what is the practice of the policy of maintaining visibility of street signs, um? I mean, I, I see that as an issue that is sort of a recurrent issue, uh. You know, I noticed the other day on, uh, after Maple Street, there's a speedrun sign. It's kind of oddly placed. Um, but it's also completely hidden, um, by, by trees and I, and there are those around town and, you know. Just seems to be there, to be a.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would say if you see something, let Butch know, he'll take care of it. I would remind everybody that for, for about fifty-two weeks of last year. The big double beer was down, eight full-time guys, so if you see something, just let him know, he'll take care of that. Uh, we did, and then the final update, we had, uh. Jenny and I had a, uh, meeting with, uh, Amy Wilson Tuesday morning, the summer rec director. Uh, that six-week program ended last Friday, very, very successful. Uh, so we had kind of, uh, just a post-mortem, kind of what went well, what, what could we improve and so forth. So that was a productive meeting, um. Tuesday, and actually one final thing, I had a meeting. First thing Monday morning with myself, Rebecca, uh, Brian, Richard and, uh, Tom Goodwin. Uh, the Assistant Harbor Master. Uh, and, uh, we really re-emphasized the need to get a map of. The mooring locations, the dock locations, and Tom's gonna do that, Brian's gonna help him. Uh, we've actually reached out to, we have this mobile stormwater app. You probably remember me talking about last year, we did a training on it. It's very, very cool, very powerful. Brian wasn't part of that training. We hadn't done the restructure. It wasn't maybe clear that that would be relevant. But he's all charged up to learn about that. And so he's gonna go out and vote with Tom. Do the photos, do geo-location, that all imports right into our mine map. So we're gonna get that map of mooring locations.
So that, that could be a layer in my map then?
Uh, it's up to us whether we make it a public layer or, uh, but it'll be, it'll be part of it when you log in. Yeah, I guess right in there.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, that's gonna bring us into compliance with that section of the Harlebar, probably for the first time ever.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and so it's been great with Brian, kind of his dual role as associate member of the Harvard Committee. Uh, you know, we had met ahead of time and he knew exactly what we needed, why we needed it, and he's gonna help make sure that happens.
Right?
Yeah.
Long time coming.
Yeah, yeah, so things are moving forward. Very responsive.
Okay, um, but I did see department updates and discussion. Um, Sage Center has still doing their summer food drive, so for August, uh, they're targeting breakfast, breakfast foods. Some suggestions, box cereal, pancake mix, pancake syrup, peanut butter and jelly.
I do have one other update on that topic that I forgot to mention, uh. Due to the heat and the lack of AC, uh, the, the. Actual temperature in the Sage Center has been over eighty degrees this week. Uh, or today it was and tomorrow, so, um. OSHA, as it turns out, has recently proposed a new standard, uh, that says. You can't have an interior workspace more than eighty degrees. So even though that's not in effect, the spirit of it is kind of having a healthy workspace, so. Uh, I talked to Rebecca and she did talk to Christine and said. If it's hot, close the Sage Center, post it on the door, post it on social media. If, you know, we can relocate programs, we can help her with that, but we don't want her and her staff. And her, uh, you know, visitors in unhealthy conditions, so. That, that did, uh. Uh, Brian had put a, a portable AC unit in Christine's suite, so she's able to work comfortably, but, uh. It's, it's, well, the heat is definitely oppressive down there.
And what's the status of the, of the air conditioner?
I haven't talked to Ryan and Caitlin since early this week. They're, they're, uh, getting, uh, we had, what's that?
Brian, actually Brian called me yesterday, so we talked a little bit, um, and, um, you know, he has. Cost that seems really low, I think. January twelve was fifteen or twenty-five thousand to replace the air conditioner alarm. Um, and, and it's a, and, and it's a larger number to put an heat pump plus. Likely, um, some electrical upgrade. So he didn't have cost information there and he was just asking for my thoughts. And I, um, uh, you know, my personal thoughts or that we should. Go to heat pump, it, it's all. It's possible and, uh, we'll hopefully have a phone call with somebody in National Grid in the next few days. On that. Um, that we will not be eligible for. The incentives for National Grid, because, um, the, uh, existing gas will be kept. Gassy will be kept on as a backup, um, and they might, uh. Um, they might not allow, ironically, um. Although. Actually, it is dependent upon, if the, and, and the, um. Pageful work, the existing oil be just there as a backup. In fact, as you know, the, the, the heat pump may not be able to keep up anyway, if, if it gets really cold, so.
That's typical of their program.
No, I, I, I understand that. All I'm saying is that, you know, it's sort of like. The suggestion is one program, one facility is gonna work one way, any other facility is gonna work the other way and, and so we need to sort of sort through that.
I just don't wanna delay this, because, I mean, that's probably our most.
Well, well, yeah, well, as Brian pointed out, at this point in time, um. It's not gonna be installed before the end of the hot season anyway.
And so we may have an extended period of time in August where we're either relocating or canceling Sage Center programs. Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
That's very unfortunate.
Yeah, it, it'd be good if we had a way to vent that heavy weight at night. Use fresh air and try, you know, night air to, to try and cool it.
Just, uh, how will we do that?
Um, there must be other windows.
There's a window at, and, uh, Christine's office, but, um, but that's separate. I'm not sure if. If they, so it could be put in the back door. I, I, I don't know. I haven't really thought about it. I haven't talked to Brian about it, just sort of thinking about it now.
Okay. Um, next item is the, um, MCU okay direct grant agreement. Is there anything you wanna cover on this, Angus, or just?
So, just, just acknowledging, yeah, of the executed contract.
Um, any other department updates? Okay, on the board, commissions and committees. Uh, so. The affordable housing trust questionnaire was done last August, but somehow did not make it anywhere scheduled, so apologize for that. So just to be completely that we. Put it in tonight. Um, are you, have you got any questions on this?
That, I, I had one, I'm just curious, I think it was in, uh, right now, um, I'm trying to. Get to that page, oh, here we are, okay. Here's, here's some two-year priorities, work to maximize the affordable housing program, approved MPTA zoning. Any idea how you do that?
Well, if you just ask for more, I mean, you can go up to twenty percent.
Ask for more, you mean if somebody is looking to actually.
I work with the developer, right? I thought you could go up to twenty percent.
You can't require anything beyond.
No.
Yeah.
Just ask for it, you know.
Okay, strong.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, what you could do and, and is, is. Become a financing source. If the affordable housing trust put money into, into the deal, you know, to buy down the affordability or something, that certainly. Uh, you, you could definitely ask, but, uh, no developers gonna do that without some compensation.
Yeah, but that's.
I hope you don't go for profit.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But that is an interesting thought to use, uh, to use funds to essentially.
At least my question is, how much funds do they have? Talks about the balance being transferred.
We're up around two hundred thousand. Um.
I think I remember number one eighty-seven being mentioned at one point. I don't know why that number sticks in my head.
And I, I, I don't have a, a time like that, but I can, I can update you in the next meeting.
I'm just curious, and what range that up this.
Yeah, so we have a three-year action plan and we actually have a financial plan each year, how much is gonna be spent. Um, one of the items is the, um, small grant program. Uh, and we just awarded our first small grant for construction of the Canadian Abraham home. So, um, we're gonna work with Max to publicize that effort, so we get some more interest in that. So that's available to anybody who needs, um. Certain income qualifications, um, residents making less than eighty percent of the area median incomes. So, uh, for a family of one, that's sixty-six thousand, family of two, seventy-five thousand, seven fifty, so not that low. Um, so other items in the action plan are, but the intent is to purchase or help build one affordable unit over the next three years. And publicity and, and other kinds of things. Uh, the only thing in here, um, I just wanted to touch on is the administrative support. You know, right now, I'm kind of leaning on, on Max to do that. I mean, at some point it'd be nice to have dedicated support. Um, especially when we start, actually, you know, like if we were to, um, have a property that we can feasibility study on and develop housing. Um, we would need some more dedicated support. But right now we're working with the town planner and assistant. But right now, we're working with the town planner and assistant.
Dr. Lam, the. Now, that covers C P C and the, and then the three departments, but doesn't.
Okay.
But possibly going forward. Anything you want to ask us?
Uh, Jim's just noting that he's seeing from town meeting records, there's about two hundred and thirty-three thousand that's been transferred into that trust over the last couple cycles and. You know, net out the seven grands for the, uh, roughly for the, uh. Small grant, but yeah, so it was right around. But obviously, we have an exact balance.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. All right. Uh, so, oh, sorry, item B is the water department has each letter.
Uh, so this letter, we just included the one addressed to the select board, but there's a thousand forty-three of these that are all unique. Uh, we really made good use of mail merge, uh, not just with the address, but with the, you know, the details, there was some, uh. You know, backend calculations with, with Excel, but I think produced a pretty nice document, which hopefully will help, uh, you know, customers. Uh, understands, you know, how the, uh, rate changes may affect them, and, uh. Is intended to basically. We're still gonna have sticker shock when the bills go out and fall, we're still gonna have people call. Unhappy about their bills, but this is intended, like it says, as, as a courtesy to kind of. You know, help people know what's going on and not hopefully be totally surprised. And really to start some conversations, so Rob's been working with the. Water Commission and the department, so for instance, you know, this went out to, I think, a hun- a thousand forty-three people or households. Uh, we're expecting that's gonna generate some number of calls into the water department, so, uh, you know, Joey's been, uh, you know. Uh, directly to take record of those, and if people are calling with questions or calling with specific concerns, to make sure that all gets. Communicated, so they can, you know, start working with people more on a customer by customer basis, particularly for those above the conservation threshold. This part, this letter I included really doesn't illustrate. You know, like maybe I could have included one, uh, for a, a different property that was above the conservation rate, but I can tell you and seeing. The letters and being part of, of producing this, that some of the letters are showing a base rate that's, you know. On its face, pretty modest, and a conservation amount that's. Pretty large, so I think those are gonna be the ones that are, people are really gonna.
These things have already gone out?
They have gone out, yeah.
Cause I. Found this one slightly confusing, and I think some people might get, unless you start doing the math. Cause it says your first three months is two forty-two. So you're gonna go, okay, if I double that, that's gonna be four hundred eighty-six. Like, it doesn't say that, right? It's not good for a rating.
Yeah.
So you're gonna go, wait a minute, if I do that, I'm at four fourteen, I'm actually doing pretty good. There, it's.
Less than two hours to do the letter edits, as well as building out the Excel model, as well as.
No, well, I'm saying, I think.
Jim, but just, just so you know, like, the water department's kept this very close to the best. And it was only at the eleven and a half hour that I was given a draft and basically completely rewrote it, cause you should have seen the.
But what I'm saying is, I don't think you're gonna get as much a surprise when this goes out. You're gonna get the biggest surprise when they get to that bill and go, I didn't realize it was gonna be that, cause it's. You know.
Well, okay, so there's confounding variables in there, in fact, the months that are upcoming, the months that they're expiring, so. Yeah, we're, we're prepping everybody to recognize what people are saying when they call in. Hopefully, we'll be able to address, like what Chris just said. But more importantly, we're gonna try and isolate those things that. Uh, were our worry about particularly, as Angus said, when you get into the conservation, the conservation is where. People are agreeing to see a change, and we're gonna try and. React to that by taking into account things that we maybe have to take into account.
No, I, I think this is great, I mean, to, to preemptively, you know, give them a heads up halfway through, I think it's, it's key.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely, you know, there's gonna be a lot of nuances, I mean, there's people who obviously probably built their swimming pool in the first. Couple of months that they're not gonna be filling it again, and then, and then next, so it's, it's just a linear, uh, protection, obviously, that take into account those. Those types of things, but yeah, it's really intended as a conversation starter, and, and so people don't get, you know, kind of. Completely caught unaware, so we're also actively researching, uh. Any, uh. Applicable, either state regulations or statutes that may, uh. Govern setting of rates, one of the things that's an objective with the water commission is to. Look at how the rate structure may apply to, for instance, agricultural uses, and whether there's an opportunity to have a. Tiered rate that is, uh, takes that into account, or, or other factors where obviously, for instance, if, uh. You know, there's eleven or twelve housing, you know, so the housing authority, and that's kind of a single meter. You know, it's not reasonable that that would be hit with the conservation rate, cause it's not one household as well, so. That's, that's the kind of detail work that's going on, that, that to be honest, you know, should have happened twenty years ago, but, you know.
This is the good, the good thing about this, Chris's observation side, the good thing about this is. That it's opening up the direct dialogue between the water department and its customers. And that's probably been lacking in the past, with the same. Yes, so, so this is good, and they fully embrace it, and it's also good, Jody was thrilled. Yeah, that's good news, so we're taking baby steps. It's, it's, it, it would, would have been problematic trying to explain all of the math that goes in this. I don't think you can do it, it's a college course, but it starts the discussion, gets people thinking about why a conservation rate exists. I guess us thinking about how to be most effective with our rate bills. So it's a good step forward, I would say.
Yeah, agreed. Right, item B is the, uh, Middle Street Bridge I A B. Any questions on that? It's just a formal, you really.
Two changes, my question is, it says Newbury, what's the amount is not to exceed one million. Six thousand and forty-nine, does limit West Newbury's.
Right.
Cause we didn't put any limits on it, we discussed it.
Right, we, we could.
Well, it's limited by the fact that it's fifty, fifty match on everything, I'm just.
Well, so this is one of the contingencies, this, this, uh. You know, it's, well, it's gonna have, I think, everything to do with how the bids come in, cause the amount that the town has appropriated. As of today for construction costs, uh, so leaving out the twenty-five thousand which voted in January. Armitage costs and things that have, have, uh. Supported these last several months of effort, um, this one million twenty-five thousand that's been appropriated, six hundred thousand stabilization. Four hundred and twenty-five from Parpa, um, so without further appropriation. That is an unstated cap, because that's all that's been appropriated. Uh, this idea I kind of alluded to earlier in the, the discussion of. Depending on where the bids come in, let's say, you know, it comes in. Above the estimated budget, uh, which, you know, would be a real problem. Rather than, uh, you know, we could look at that and say, okay, we're not going forward, and you always have the right in any procurement to reject any, you know, bids and not help out. Or, uh, you know, we could go to the voters, or, you know, and, and seek another appropriation, I don't think any of us would like to do that. I, I'm certain none of us would like to do that, and have to explain why that would make our share of fifty-fifty, uh. Uh, so that's something that, you know, also the board's gonna need to decide based on the bids, uh.
But with relative to the bids, this is where it gets a little squishy, you've got nine hundred thousand in contingencies, that's not part of the bid.
No.
So if you come in at your total nut, you, you're dead in the water, because you're nine hundred thousand over without contingencies.
Right.
So a couple of bucks here and there is not gonna save anything at that point.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it has everything to do with the bids, and, uh, so we are, you know, we won't know the bid due date until we set it and issue the invitation for bid. Uh, uh, in the next, ideally in the next two weeks, uh.
Well, how long does it typically take?
Well, so you, it's, it, uh, anywhere from thirty to sixty days, I think thirty to forty-five days is good. We're really aiming for forty-five days, we wanna give prospective respondents as much time as, as they'll need. Uh, it's, uh, you know, in the scheme of things, that's, I guess, a pretty small project, but certainly for us, it's a big project, and. There, there's, you know, um, it's got multiple federal permits, multiple state permits, multiple local permits, so there's, you know, the, the, the. Contractor, and that's obviously all gonna be part of the, those are all gonna be addenda to the invitation for bid, so. They're gonna need time, obviously, to make sure they know what they're getting into, it's drinking water source and all the conditions and so forth, so. So we wanna provide the bidders as much time as we can to optimize, you know, get as many bids as we can, so. The, uh, I. Corresponding Caitlin in the last, uh, two days, the, you know, we could have them, assume, let's say we issue it October, on, uh, August twelfth. We can have it do. Uh, like ra- around September twenty-seventh or around October fourth, my inclination is to push it a little later. That squeezes us with regard to any potential town meeting article, or FinCom or C I C, so those are all things that we're. We're needing to think through and, and, uh. Uh, basically, you know, I, I did spend, uh, you know, probably several hours this week on the bridge, but next week I need to spend. Probably double that amount of time to really get it.
So with this memorandum.
Yeah.
West Newbury's exposure is potentially nineteen thousand dollars more. Cause we've allocated.
Uh, yeah, potentially, I mean, that's not. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, you know, uh.
Well, we also received the grant, right?
Well, the, the, the net costs account for all of that, because.
Most recent grant is part of this whole, I think that was just recent, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, the recent seven fifty is part of it, there is the earmark, is that where you're from? So I don't know if, I don't know, I don't know if that was approved or not. So, yeah, I, I'm not sure if it was part of the budget, so. We, we got a note from Representative Ramos in probably May, uh, that she had put, uh, proposed earmark of twenty-five thousand into the state budget. Uh, I haven't got confirmation if that was approved, if it was, you know, that's, I guess, depending on how you read that, that's, uh.
Well, it's not part of this I M A.
No, no, so, yeah.
You have any idea, uh, if you've reported after the ceremony?
I have no idea, yeah. I doubt it, I tend to doubt it.
So do you need us to vote this?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure. We'll make a motion to approve the revised inch municipal agreement as modified by Newbury.
Sorry.
Great, thank you.
Yahoo.
Yeah.
Would, would just remind everyone, the city council's vote was to authorize the mayor. Not to wreck the mayor, so I can't imagine.
Well, Max is gonna go strong on tomorrow, you said, right? Take those little sign placards with him, he can spin through them.
I hope it won't come to that, but, but that's part of it, I wanna get this thing signed, so.
Hope he sees the benefit of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, the next item is, did you print out?
I did, yeah, and I don't know if you wanna take this up now, or, or take it up in a few minutes, uh, probably, but this is, uh.
So this is just the, the summary of what we discussed last week. My intent tonight is not that we discuss it, but just to make sure it's accurate as far as the two of you and Angus fall.
Yeah, it shows you the direction we're trying to go in terms of, you know, having kind of lists of, of, uh, immediate, near term and, and long terms. Uh, and, uh, you know, I think we wanna have this on a future agenda for the board to kind of actually. Indoor, so we have something that, that can be shared more broadly and that we all have ownership of. Uh, obviously, it's a, it's a, you know, something that you can come look at, it's a public document, but I think, uh, you know, we definitely wanna make sure. That you three and me have all had time to really review it closely against our notes from last Thursday.
So what about this quick, how's it prioritized? I, I don't see any priorities listed, or is it just?
The first page is immediate, which is zero, you know, by December of this year.
Okay.
It's in red at the top.
Yeah.
So then the near term is six to twelve months, and long term is FY twenty-six would be done. So it's not prioritized within each timeframe? And then, if you recall, the required column is, is ones that Angus felt were either mandated or central for town government operations.
But there's definitely, you know, we, we, we don't, you know, tonight's not the night to go through every detail, but there's definitely some things that are. Kind of already. You know, well enough along that like, you know, even if they're listed as a long term, I think, and those are when we do have it on a future agenda. You know, let's make sure we have enough time to dig into the details of some of those, cause there's things that, uh. You know, might be at the ten yard line or, or even closer. And it's just that last question to get them over, that, that it might be worth picking off some of those, just to. Check them off the list, or, you know, one thing that, that kind of, I think, take examples all night, but, uh, one thing is the, uh. Uh, you know, on page three, capital by, by revised consistency with policy, right now, the capital committee. Is already scheduled, has held meetings, has, has another meeting scheduled at the end of August, so I have to decide, like, do I get pulled into that? And do I start putting in hours of time on that, which is what it will take? Or do I say, I'm not gonna be involved, in which case, like, how's that gonna go? So it's just, that's just one example, there's lots, but, and, and even some of the things, uh. Um, you know, like now with the Harvard committee new appointment, like there's now someone pushing for like. You know, they're, they, it might push the urgency of, of like a Harvard bylaw.
Oh, I thought those are decisions that you have to make, that, that's the whole point of this, just to put you back in the driver's seat.
Yeah.
You know, not external meetings.
Yeah. And, and, you know, and I, I mean, again, I could cheer it all night, but the, the, on page three, stormwater, culvert mapping engineers, beyond River Road. As part of the meeting we had today with N V P C and with Clay there and Butch, and, and, uh. And actually Christine was part of that, Rebecca, like. That would be so helpful, because right now, like, we were looking at River Road and the catch basins are a map. But none of the drain lines are in our G I Fs, and none of them are, there's no asphalt, so there's not, but Butch, Butch was saying to. To Clay, he's like, oh, there's a twelve inch runs from here to here, that like, he knows, and with this mobile app. I, I said to Butch, like, either he or John Spalding or Paul Serdigny could probably go out with this mobile app, spend two or three days. Data production in the field. So it's like, but, but I like what you said, Wendy, because it's kind of like, it's not, there's not, there's not a deadline. The sooner we get it done, the more we can start, you know, continue functioning like a modern professional.
Oh, you know, it seems good with an app like that, that. You know, even if you spend fifteen minutes in any particular day, you're in a particular area, there's two culvers.
Yeah.
Document, you're, you're right there.
Right, right, so, yeah, so that, and that's what we're trying to do with some of this, like. You know, or the shared servers, so it's like a huge, if you look at it as a standalone thing, it's a huge thing, but. Like, as I'm getting Jane Geary on boarded, and, you know, where she's supporting multiple departments, this, you know, getting to an improved. And, and with Max and what he's doing on like, uh, you know, record management and so forth, so. So some of the things that are longer term, in fact, are going to happen sooner, just because they're kind of already part of what we've been trying to do for. In some cases, the whole time we've been here, uh, so, but I like the spirit of that, uh. That those are kind of the things we get to when we have time, uh, they're not, they're not things that were, that are objectively urgent.
When we talked about this the last meeting, and one thing that sort of bothered me, and bothered me a lot, I guess, was there was comments about. Residents and board committee members who go in and try and redirect employees. Would it be helpful if the select board requested that you put out a memo to all town employees, and I just wrote something quick. To say that they take direction from the town manager or their immediate supervisor, and that any request from residents of a board committee. Members needs to be redirected to the town manager, if these people had a document that gave them that confidence that you, that we and you are backing them up on that. I think that might.
I have known of towns with manager forms of government that have had, and it's been very helpful, and I've heard about it from department heads. Who have appreciated that because it allows them to.
They could even paste it in their office, if somebody comes in and wants to start saying, you gotta go out and fix this or do that. Because it gets very sloppy if, if we.
Yeah.
Cause they have no authority to say, well, it's not me, cause they're expecting it, cause the town employee to get taken care of, so.
Right.
I would like to go down that path in some fashion.
Yeah, I, I'm right there with you, I, I fully embrace that, and one thing I started working on for last Thursday, and I didn't get it far enough to, to circulate. But I have, I started putting it together, and I think it's a, a pretty good start, I just want another half hour with it to really like. Really scrutinize it, but what it is, is, uh. You know, on the X axis is all the departments or the. Or the the key staff, you know, so uh. And on the Y axis is all the boards and committees, and then I got this little system of, like, if it is an X. It means that staff person is a primary dedicated support to that board or committee. If it's an O, it's more of a secondary, so just, for example, I've got uh, you know, uh, like uh. Community Preservation Committee, you know, I'm ex officio, so I've got an X. Uh and the CPA administration, which I changed this to House D, but the land building services, so they have a dedicated staff person. So they can go to Jangiri and say, we want this website changed, or this program, or, you know, and that, they they're empowered to do that. Uh that's different than a committee that either, you know, doesn't have dedicated staff or or only has people with O. Which is kind of like. It's so, I, but I'd like to get to where there's a clearly defined relationship between staff and boards and committees, so that. Those who have staff support can continue to rely on it, and those who don't, to set up exactly what Chris was saying. That some protocol where, you know. They're not gonna just give direction to a staff person who is now questioning like. You know, well, jeez, the town manager said, like, this is the priorities, and now I'm under political pressure from this entity to do this.
That's what I'd like to eliminate, not just what's happened now, I can think of issues in the past that were very messy, because there was no support on something like this, so.
So would that be a policy, is that what you're talking about, like a select word policy?
Yeah, I wanna make it a policy, just a memo from the town, well, Angus and um supervisors are the ones supposed to direct the work.
Man, yeah.
I I think it'd be helpful for that to be public.
Yeah, I'd like to get it to a point where I can really, I could say, yes, I, and I and I highlighted a couple of things where. I thought there might be opportunities, uh you know, this all requires discussion with affected staff, but there might be opportunities to formalize some relationships, so. I'll just call out Jim here, he's been very helpful with the cultural council, he's been to a number of their meetings, he's been their point person. It's not his job per se to do that, it's making his job, that way it's, you know, I haven't talked to him about this. But that way, like, cause he's already doing it, and it's helpful, and and there is no one on staff whose. Job it is explicitly to engage and liaise with the cultural council, uh you know.
Isn't, isn't, you know, the committee may ask, but it's still up to you.
Yes, it is, it is, yeah.
I mean, that that feels a little vague, and then I can.
It's more a liaison kind of touch point, uh you know, similar, uh you know, and this is something that we we'll talk about certainly further. But uh, you know, with regard to historical commission, obviously, Max has shown a real affinity for that, he has a real skill set there. He's actively looking for more responsibilities, that could be something that that plays out through, you know, through a process of. You know, to to maybe formalize a, a support role, because in practice, he's, you know, providing some of that support, so. Anyhow, there's different things, there's a lot to this, uh some of them very clear, town planner work, you know. Supports the planning board and so forth, some are crystal clear.
Yeah.
But but many of them, especially as the organizations change over the last few years, we've had staffing changes, we have people with capacity and capability. Uh you know, and I think there's a way to maybe have committees feel more supportive, there have to be parameters. I mean, Chris is a hundred percent right, and and we saw that with Michelle where, you know, conservation, but also open space in Mill Pond. And there were times that she was really under duress, because she was being asked to do ninety hours of work. In a week, like, you can't, you know, so that's where the manager comes in and has to make sure there's. A clear framework, so you don't have people pushed to the point of burnout uh or or, you know.
But any resident or board or committee member, like, went into Michelle and said, I need this done, if she has a memorial policy that says, you know. Please redirect this to the town manager, I think that makes it a lot easier.
I think so too.
For the employees.
Or to the or to supervisor, in Michelle's case, when they go to.
No, town manager, or whatever, yeah, yeah.
I'm just coaching, cause I know the appropriate language, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One or the other, right?
Yeah, town of Reading had exactly that policy, uh at least I, the consulting for them in probably two thousand eight. I don't know if it's still there, the former manager had it, but but I remember, I told uh Wendy about this, the town planner, who was my. I did some zoning work, some forty yard work for them, and uh the town planner, Karen Wallskey, was a seasoned veteran. She'd worked for many towns, she was a real professional, and she was like, couldn't say enough good things about her manager. Peter Heckingbacher, who's long since retired, and and this was one of the things, she's like, you know, I'm able to do my job, and like. You know, he provided, you know, some framework, uh because Reading, you can imagine, it's a absolute town, a million things going on. You know, you can only imagine the the level of pressure that staff can be under, some boards, commissions, committees, and residents, if there's not someone to say. This is your priority, that that can get, you know. Yeah, when I worked in Westford, I was supporting eleven boards and committees, and uh. You know, I was working sixty, seventy hours a week, and I was having a child, and I went to my manager, I said, I can't keep doing this, and. I didn't come away with a feeling that anything was gonna change, and I liked that time, cause I, it was insane what I was doing for that time.
I think, well, it's not really a policy, it's just a fact of the town's structure, I mean, I think we have to think about what the vehicle is. But this is definitely a topic to discuss with the board and committee peers, and sometimes when we talk about priorities, it's just to.
It's also gonna cover residents too, so I can.
Yeah.
I know people come to town hall and say, I need this done.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I, do you know what the appropriate vehicles is?
Well, I think you're, I think you're right, that the 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 chairs meeting is so important, all of this, because I do think when one frames the right way. Then, which is all accurate, I think everybody's gonna say, my gosh, I had no idea. I am optimistic, but I, but I.
People want what they want, they don't care.
No, I, I know, but I do think, I think I would hope people can all with some appreciation. That we have great staff, they're all working really hard. I hope people will share the objective of not wanting to drive staff to burnout to the point where we lose staff.
Right.
And and therefore, there's got to be a mechanism to say, no, without it becoming a political disaster, or some post on Facebook, or whatever can happen. And, you know, in in a town that's, it is ambitious, but in a town this size, we're not a town of, they're twenty five thousand people. We're a town of forty five hundred people, uh with really more like two hundred people who are really the poor people who make everything happen. Now, hopefully, we can uh, you know, start with the chairs and then ours through all the appointed, you know.
So maybe, wouldn't it be just a memo from you to your employees emphasizing that?
Yeah, I I think it absolutely could be, because under the Town Manager Act, the town manager is charged with. You know, basically oversight and direction of of all the departments.
I think it's simplest to me, and it gives them the ability to say, look, I would like to help you, but that direction has to come from either town manager. Or my supervisor, if that's the case.
Yeah.
And now they're not having to make a tough decision, do they appease somebody, or do they continue with the job they've been doing?
Mm-hmm.
Memo seems a simple.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, good.
All right, so speaking of the board committee uh chair meeting, do you want to set a date for that? What what is our meeting um schedule and? I think we're the the twelfth and the twenty sixth in September, is that right? Are we looking to combine that with one of our meetings or a standalone?
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Very significant conversation.
So maybe the nineteenth, September nineteenth, in between our, or do we need more time to prepare for it?
Probably can't do the nineteenth.
I'd say a bit extra, um.
Okay.
Just just because.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, one strike while the iron's hot, um.
So the week before, the fifth?
Fifteenth and the twelfth, I have listed.
Yeah, I have them both listed too.
And why is that? I don't recall why we have two weeks in September.
Uh because we we didn't have one for the for the last week in August.
Right, right, I think that was the idea, uh.
Yes, it was one, the fifteenth of August, there's not, yeah, twenty second is not on.
So you have twelve for B C and C, and that way you got a meeting either side of it.
One thing I I did uh get a notice, actually, earlier this week, there is the Mass Municipal H R Conference uh. Which I have tended to go to, uh, that's the twelfth and thirteenth, uh I just learned about this week, I have not signed up for it, cause I wanted to. You know, talk about schedule, I don't have to go to it, it it is something that's uh. A hel- helpful thing uh on H R.
It's a good suggestion then, I don't mean, could we do the boards and committees on the tenth?
On five on the tenth, yeah.
There's not, you know, hopefully a big pack of preparations, so during a weekend, delete the twelfth meeting, that frees you up.
I'd be totally supportive if that date works for.
All right, Rick, is that good for you?
Uh I can do that, yeah, so um.
But that's gonna leave us without.
Well, yeah, 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 I'm just curious, cause we.
Yeah, the fifth and then the twenty sixth, that's three weeks between meetings. Heading into fall town meeting.
Yeah, you're probably, we're probably gonna, we're probably gonna be more meetings.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask a question about meetings, only going to the fall town meeting, I suspect that we're gonna be meeting. Even FinCom on your nights, or, or we uh also do, say, Wednesdays.
I think we should do some of both.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's what I'm guessing.
I mean, what do you think? Yes.
I I guess sharing is good.
So we do it down, we get to that point.
All right.
Let's just plug what we got for now.
All right, so right now we have a meeting on the fifth, we're talking about the board committee chair meeting on the tenth. And then a meeting on the twenty sixth, so I think we're gonna need another meeting in there somewhere.
So I suspect so.
And we also may, you know, it's not out of the question for me, I mean, it's not up to me first of all, but it's not out of the question. As far as I'm concerned, I have something in late August, uh I had my my home schedule was a little bit in flux, I had it penciled in. To be off the week of the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
More recently, uh. Uh, you know, what, I might end up taking some time the week of the twelfth. And the week of the twenty sixth, but maybe not all that week, so we can take take this offline.
Okay.
But, but.
Well, I should just say, I'm I'm planning to not be here, I'm backpacking the twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, I'm gonna be back on the twenty ninth. Then I make the C I C meeting. So, I'm uh currently planning to not.
That's right, the C I C has a meeting August twenty ninth.
Okay.
They're talking about policy, right, so, yeah, I mean, so we have to figure out what happens there, but.
Okay, all right, well, let's, so we wanna choose the tenth.
Yeah, let's let's lock in the tenth, and then at our next meeting, uh really, really.
Yeah.
Let's put the calendar, and and if we have to make adjustments, let's do that then.
Okay.
I'll certainly know more by then about my uh.
Okay, so in terms of this work plan here, do you wanna get feedback envisioned Angus, or just wait till our meeting on the fifteenth?
Yeah, I think if people have markups, just, yeah, by all means, drop them by, uh and uh, you know, I can build those in on a. Kind of a, you know. As as I get them, or based on time of the block. Yeah, and I wanna, like, we've talked about Wendy, I wanna really go through it compared to my notes and, um.
Yeah, I mean, we basically only pulled out the high priority ones, and everything else just went on a long term list, so there are ones that need to be.
And there's some nuances in there, I mean, one thing on the required, uh you know, we talked about, like, one of the, one of the subsets of the one thirteen. The plan, I had Marcus required, and and Wendy, it's not really required, and. It isn't, other than in that particular one, we had accepted a state budget earmark, and what happens then is that's effectively a grant. They send you a contract, we sign a contract, and we then have to do that within the fiscal year, so. It's interesting, like, it's great to get that free money at that budget earmark, but we've now tied ourselves to the state timeline, right? So it is in fact required to do it within a certain, so there's some nuances, so there might be things you see as required, that you might say. Why is that required, and and, you know, there's typically a backstory.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that column was, I don't feel like we should change it if we have questions, but you're the one that decides.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if I had all all kinds of time, it'd be cool to kind of build that out with, like, is it a statute, is it a bylaw, is it a. Is it a term of a grant, you know, or is it an OSHA regulation, like, what makes it required or necessary for town operations? Cause it's it's both, it's either of those things or both.
Yeah.
My thing on this though, is we went through it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Angus clearly understands what our top three, four, five priorities are, and after that, it's, you cut the document, I would like him.
I just wanna make sure that I captured, thi- this is just from my notes, I just wanna make sure I captured what you guys also heard.
Just looking at it quick, though, my top priorities in Congress, so.
All right, so if if there's anything on here that you disagree with, is what we discussed then, but Angus, no. All right, uh request for a code of war for September state primary elections. What do we have there, Jim?
Uh standard warrant, uh warning the town of the impending election.
Right.
There are no options, it's an obligation, right?
Yeah.
Legally, we can't hold a jury if we don't do it.
But you have to have the privacy, they have to do it.
All right, so we vote.
Yeah, so I, so, yeah, I move that we bring the warrant as presented for the um September third primary, state primary watch.
Second.
On paper. Right, item E, determine the date for the fall special town meeting.
Uh I would recommend uh Monday, October twenty eighth.
Yes.
And uh, that that works well with the bridge, uh we confirmed Casey is available. Uh did we confirm the gun here yet? We haven't confirmed uh the middle high school, the objective would be to have it there, um. Uh as a driver, yeah, so uh. Whenever the next big one is, we're not saying that.
This could be a big one.
We per- tentatively, we've talked twenty first over twenty, so twenty first is off twenty eighth.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's good.
Yeah, that extra week is gonna make a big difference on the the bridge as well as given the thing, you know, capital improvements.
Given what we just talked about in September too.
Yeah.
We need the extra.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's not helping fortunately.
Fortunately, yeah.
We have a meeting scheduled beginning of October, we do. Is that gonna change? Cause we have a meeting on October tenth.
Well, we have a, a, we currently have a board meeting scheduled for that night.
Yeah, that'll be, cause I guess I'm going for a week in between our schedules around, and as we put in.
The twenty fourth?
Well, make the first to the ninth, I can think.
First to the ninth of?
Yeah, October.
Yeah, so we, right now, we're meeting the tenth and the twenty fourth.
We got it. Rob coming to say, what's the meeting on that Tuesday or something?
You can take that up with Rob. All right, that's two minutes, uh first one is July first. Top of page two, I M D. Wild motion to appoint the board to their respective positions, I think that needs to be clarified.
I understood, I thought the wording was a little odd to.
Yeah.
To maintain the ones we had the previous year.
See that, Jim?
You said D?
Yeah, I, um, small D.
Or numbers, or maybe the memo, and the fact, I think, that it raised exactly, exactly who's what. It'd probably be good to help that be filmed in that.
Okay. And and, yeah, something, right? Yeah, under F, capital F, um just a, um, the first, first F. Small array, third line down, the word granted. And that's just to me, it ought to be having approved at town meeting. I don't know if anybody else is troubled by that, but this is our group, just yeah, yeah. Um and then two lines down, the word a conger from Weston and Santa. Representatives from Weston and Santa, maybe. Great word. Is it more accurate? I'm not sure it'll be a conger.
Um the next sentence after that, or the next line after that, I would strike. It's just, it's a long sentence, so I would say he suggested, and then take out that using select word funds, just say he suggested that the town's prior. It's just, it's a long sentence, so I would say he suggested, and then take out that using select word funds, just say he suggested that the town's prior consultant be hired to carry you. You know, and then say using select word funds, maybe make that two sentences. Because then it runs on to the potential sea level rise, and I think that needs to be clarified, um. Because the sea level impact was evaluated, but it was the second tier, I mean, first they did all their stuff, and then they did the sea level rise model, so I, I don't think. Ways are any plus that, and I don't want it to appear that we didn't consider it. Um, do you want me to take a crack at editing that, or do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying, but I think your edit would feel better.
Um, and then on the last paragraph, that section under A. Um, I would just add where it says a request for additional funds could be brought, I would say. Additional funds to conduct well testing could be brought before special town meeting. That's all I have, where is Jim?
Yeah, I had something to figure out, what I wanted to, on the second to last paragraph, talking about, uh, removing the original call. Uh, I guess I don't really have a problem.
What's there?
Make a motion for the minutes of July first is modified.
Sure.
On paper?
Hi.
Bye. Um, item B, B. Uh, the second line, it says with minimal effort needed to be expended in treated areas, is that accurate, Angus, that? Seems to me like this is gonna be an ongoing.
Uh, the goal is to treat it to where with regular mowing, it will prevent. Regular being at least once a year.
We won't need a contractor.
We wouldn't need the herbicide.
Okay.
That is the goal.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's, uh, ambitious, and one thing that we put in a contract that was, uh, I think really good, that came out of some discussion we had with the site visit and, uh. Subsequent, uh, correspondence was, uh, there's actually a, a percentage covered threshold in the contract. That says that if, if basically the town and the vendor kind of mutually agree that. Something, and it's not a binding thing, it's more of a guiding thing, but that if the. Uh, in, it sets kind of a target of invasives covered not to exceed, I forget, was it ten percent?
Yeah, I believe it's five or ten.
Five or ten percent, and if, but if it does, if that starts to happen. We're gonna need to kind of continue with the herbicide for some period of time, but the long term goal, like the hundred year goal, is to get it to where. You can't really eradicate it, but you can manage it, that's what we're trying to do, to get it to where it's, it's a small percentage of the land's covered. At which point, regular mowing, it would be, in the words of the contractor, kind of said, forget that. Of course, what they don't do, and it, uh, it would not. Become, you know, a big problem again, in that location.
Yeah.
We're gonna need to eventually do kind of land metric plans probably for a forward piece of town of its base.
I'm sure we want them to continue to be.
Right.
These is climate of the years.
Okay. Um, on, under item G, there's just a striker that needs to be deleted, the last, second to last line, eight new, that's. Just didn't drop out. Why are you laughing?
There's one of the markers, and he didn't delete it.
Oh. Oh, that's Chris's string. Anything on page two? Um, page three, are, are we calling? In buildings and grounds, or is that the facilities department, what's, what's the?
Uh, facilities, where, where, where do you see?
Under F, small F, about ARPA, it says the building and grounds team.
Yeah, facilities, I think it's a squad.
Yeah, I did.
Mine will have consistency.
Alright, so there's two, two references there, the two buildings and grounds.
So just for simplicity.
Yeah.
Yeah, the show is.
Um, under item F, A, on the MBTA. I don't think it's that the Commonwealth vetoed our plans, we were asking for clarification, and they, we weren't proposing something, we just asked for clarification, and they gave it to us, but that. So I, that just needs to be rewarded, rewarded.
Which, sorry.
This is item A, the first, it says the Commonwealth vetoed plans, West Newbury had to. To meet MBTA, we use that.
Yeah, and, and it's also overstating to have, to say we have plans, we had a concept.
Right, right, so we're just looking for clarification. Um, also that paragraph, it says an affordable housing development, which is not what this is. It's just a.
Right.
Hey, item B, I would strike the second sentence, saying he intimated that amended language. It's not necessary, and it's just, we didn't say anything about regionalization, at least. You could strike that, the next two sentences, and start, he went over the contract and pointed out changes.
But he did say it wouldn't need to regionalization.
But that was in the context of, this is something all the chiefs were working on, like with Salisbury, and he was. Pointing out that it's not that we're gonna do the same thing they are, it's gonna be specific to West Newbury. Right? That was the context you brought it up in, so if we wanna dive into that, I think that.
That doesn't matter to me.
Yeah. I don't think we lose anything for taking it out, right?
Lose the standings.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. All right, we got that. Jim, okay.
The universal.
All right, under item C, um. Jennings, there's just an extra word, talk to mention. CCRC worked the prior night and been very productive, I just don't understand what that means, is this referring to the, um. Public hearing or the public meeting that we had?
No, this was to do with the, uh, discussion at the CCRC meeting regarding, uh. Yeah, potential next.
Next step, okay, so just delete either talk or mention. Probably talk, is that verb is not right?
Of course, I probably, yeah, I should have just mentioned, but, knowing me.
All right, Rick, anything, are you good?
Yeah, under, um, uh, F, C. Um, the, uh, we're, the recent group looked at images of a sinkhole that had recently opened on River Road. Due to water coursing beneath the pavement, um. I would just rephrase that, you know, the, the group was shown an, an image. Of a sinkhole that had recently opened on River Road. Due to, due to seepage beneath the pavement, we don't know that it was water coursing.
Yeah.
You can just delete that, right? You don't have to say due to anything.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, that would be fine, just had it raised on the opener, right, yeah. Um, and then, um, and then, uh. Down at the bottom of the same paragraph, where it says reflective markers on the Meramec side of the byway. I think that would be, because Meramec is across the river, spelled differently, but still. I, I, I just think it would be better to say on the riverside of the road. So the motorists would be able to see where the pavement edge was during flooding events. Would be able to see.
Oh, just.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the spelling is correct, that's the spelling for the river. As I understand, and the spelling for the town doesn't have the, doesn't have the K, but, um, uh, but. Just kind of, um.
Anything else?
No.
Pick a motion, through the minutes of July, it's amended, sorry.
On paper.
Bye.
Bye. All right, general discussion, uh, joint meeting with the planning board, my office sits. This memo outlines the, the three items that we are planning on discussing. Angus, do you wanna give an update of where we're at with those?
Sure, so the, uh, they're listed really in order of priority for sure, the, uh, hazard production plan, uh, as you know, is mandated, uh. And it's gotta be written within, uh, uh, constraints of the regulations, uh. Some of the production goals are really not realistic, uh, but they have to be. Shown to, to, uh, get state approval, with that said, we, we have tried to. You know, working with the consultant and those who've been involved with the process, try to come up with a plan that's still useful, and so I hope people won't get too focused on. The production numbers, which really are out of scale with what has actually happened in development in recent, well, for twenty years, many year, many, many years. And, uh, you know, I would suggest, well, any and all input on this is, is very welcome. I can say Sue and I, our focus is really to action items, are those things that we feel are. Uh, things we support and would intend to actually follow through on, um. Some of those are more qualitative than a quantitative production numbers. Which realistically, we do not expect we're going to make, so, uh. You know, just, uh, where you did, you may have noticed, there was a news announcement that went out today with the draft plan, if. If people approach you and say, hey, it's showing here eighteen of forty million as a year for each of the next five years, you know. It's not gonna happen, the plan has to include those numbers in order to meet the regulations, it's just one of the many, many ways that the state. Uh, makes our jobs difficult, so, I've been communicating causing production plans for twenty years, it's very difficult, because you have to write it a certain way. Uh, to meet that.
Um, so in terms of logistics, are we approving the plan that night?
No.
Any feedback from the trust?
No, no, so, I mean, you could, I strongly would recommend not voting Tuesday night for the, for the reason that, so we got the draft. We, we had seen it earlier drafts, but we got, uh, the updated, uh, Sue and I had met with Kaylee, who's the primary person at MBPC. Probably right around the first of July, uh, maybe late June, uh, giving her some feedback, it was, I think it was Tuesday of this week. That we got the draft plan, uh, we thought we would get it like two weeks ago, uh. Uh, so Sue and I each went through, made some revisions, uh, that's what's in your packet. Uh, or what will be, but what I emailed around, which will be in your packet for Tuesday. Uh, we tried to catch everything, uh, and, uh, but. You may see other things, so I, I think where it was only just today made avail, made broadly available. I would not recommend voting on Tuesday, because I don't want anyone to say this was like jammed through or rushed through or whatever. Uh, so my recommendation would be that you, you know, we have a good discussion with the planning board Tuesday, it will be presented, Kaylee will be there, it's a remote meeting. But she'll be presenting, there are, there are slides that we're working with her to, to finalize as of, I just got those.
Is it remote forever?
Well, well, uh.
I would prefer we meet in person.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we.
So, the planning board.
They're gonna be fully remote.
They, yeah.
Yeah, that's how they do it.
Yeah, so it was interesting, and this is just an aside, I don't know if you caught it, the new report, city council meeting, um. Like really putting pressure on the compound for not.
Right, no, I, I did hear that, yeah, yeah, and I, I agree with that.
You know, this is something we need to talk about.
Yeah, there, there, there are, uh, a lot of founders board, but it seems to be there should be.
Yeah.
Meeting in person at this point, I told you, yeah.
All right, so that's, that's a topic for another meeting perhaps.
So, so Kayla, uh, Kayla will be presenting the plan. Sue asked how long that would take, she thinks it'll take about a half an hour to present the plan. Uh, it could go slower or quicker if there's questions, uh, but it is a major item on Tuesday's agenda, and was. The purpose of having the joint meeting, so she'll present that, there'll be some discussion, I recommend you have good discussion, provide feedback, but not vote it. Scheduled depending on the state of readiness, you could put it on for two weeks out, or you could put it September.
So it doesn't have to be another joint meeting?
No, 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 that would be separate.
Okay, so we have edits or whatever, that, that will come as a result of the meeting on Tuesday, I mean, how do you envision if we had comments?
Yeah, I have it in Word, I can send it to each of you in Word if you wanted to, you know, I, I think for what we've put out, what we've already circulated for Tuesday, that's the starting point for Tuesday. But I think if we have suggestions coming out of that, we can, we can all put our fingerprints on it and, and make sure that by the time it's formally voted by each of the boards, that it really does. We, and I'll restate me and Sue, we really want something that we embrace and, and support. Notwithstanding that some of the production goals aren't realistic, but in terms of the, the more qualitative policy stuff. We do want it to be something that is a relevant plan, and not just a box checking exercise. Uh, so look at it with that spirit, uh. And, uh, and then, you know, it takes, how long it takes, if it takes another six or eight weeks, there's really no problem with that. The next one, the MBTA communities. Next steps, we had the funding obviously through to the spring, since that time, we've had the clarification from the Commonwealth that. That really, you know, drives a dagger through the heart of the, what are your idea? Sure, Maxo.
Then we'll have to modify the minutes of that.
Uh, but now we know that's what you actually said.
I actually said it, yeah, I own it, so, uh. Uh, but we're on a, you know, anticipated timeline of bringing zoning back to the spring town meeting. Uh, so this would be a good opportunity for the two boards to. Uh, kind of reaffirm whether the zoning that was largely, uh, you know, that was initially, that was proposed in the spring and was really ready to go. Whether that continues to be the direction, or whether there's any appetite to like reopen the book, I think the way Sue and I are looking at it, it's really. What additional analysis do we feel is gonna be needed to be fully responsive to the questions and concerns people have at the public hearings? Uh, we think the fiscal impact analysis is definitely gonna be, uh, important, uh, probably necessary. Uh, the other couple of items that we're thinking of, but we might not be thinking of everything, are to do with water and traffic and weather. Uh, one or both boards see that additional analysis, uh, you know, might be warranted for either of those. Or possibly something else we're not thinking of, so. We did meet with, like I said earlier, we met with Ray yesterday, with Sue, uh, Wendy, myself, and, uh, Jan Kieran sat in on that as the, you know, support person. Uh, for planning at other departments, so. That's the major focus for Tuesday is what's our, what's our game plan, and what are the studies that we're gonna need, and we do have a proposal I got late this afternoon from, uh. An economist who specializes in these fiscal impact analyses, so, uh, I better, I wanna read that through, uh, but that's gonna be in your packet for Tuesday night's meeting. Uh, to see if that's, if you think that scope is, uh, responsive to what you're expecting, you just gonna be.
What's the status of litigation with Milton and any, any other towns, cause I think that's what a lot of this is.
Yeah, see, maybe you can do some Googling tomorrow, see what we can find out about that.
And that, that's one thing.
Not to court yet.
No, I don't think so, but just, you know, see what you can find out, cause I, I don't, I don't.
Nobody's capitulated, yeah.
But, but I do think a lot, a lot of the conversation was about, well, what's gonna happen to us, let's just not do it, and Angus provided all the numbers, what we could lose in grant money, but it would be nice to have a legal opinion about. What our vulnerability is if we don't, just to address those people's concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
And also whether the Milton case even applies to us, Karen said it doesn't, but we had that, you know, in writing from.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think it's a mandate by the state, and I think Milton was. Testing the waters, and we, I think we said pretty clear, we'll see by fall what Milton does, and if. You know, the courts throw it out, fine, but if not, we're gonna go forward in the spring, so.
Yeah, but other people also said, well, can't we just put it like, you know, on a place where that's already developed, like a shopping.
I've suddenly thought of all these odd things, but I think.
I know, but if, if that is the, you know, discussion in a room, it would be nice to just write up, you know, address that head on.
Yeah.
If possible, there's a way to do that. Um, one other question I had, and I think I asked this a couple of meetings ago, is who is running this?
Yeah.
And I, I think it would be beneficial for the SLIP board and you. To, to be running it, and not the planning board, just from a public perception, I mean, with you.
Also, if they're remote, it makes us more difficult.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And also with the turnover of the planner position, you know, it's gonna be eight to ten weeks or more. Probably before we have a new planner and, uh.
I mean, the word our was put forward by the SLIP board, so.
Yes.
Um, so I, I don't know how to say that in the meeting, but I, I think that needs to be made clear, and I'm not, we're not gonna listen with. So I, I don't know how to say that in the meeting, but I I think that needs to be made clear, you know, not that we're not gonna listen like they want, but.
Now, how about Mullen? Is that something that we need to formally resolve? Whether that's gonna be an area of study, it would be a possibility if you wanted to engage Dawson and Flinker to do a conceptual design.
Just sort of.
Would know, no, for MBTA communities.
But I thought we had to have like a purchase and sale, wasn't that?
That's never been formalized, that's what I think.
That's what they said, right? Dawson and Flinker or?
Yeah, 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 they're, yeah, they're, yeah, it's.
I think anything that was said before, we need to independently verify, you know, just to try to cut down on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll. At the, there was a, an email from Dawson and Flinker. I'll make sure that gets over the packet.
Although it's not detailed, that'll really be relevant, that discussion would be interesting to know what was, you know, falling back to reference to the traffic, whether or not a traffic study or some kind of, you know, an analysis of what traffic impact could be, just to understand what currently exists for traffic accounts. Does MBPC have it? Does the state have it? It is a state highway, so maybe the state has information. And and if so, you know, is there any granularity to do it based on time of day?
You probably noticed they have had the counters out in the last few days.
Yeah, it seemed a problem. Close to the counter as well.
MBPC.
There were only a few days though, I, I, was it like down on Bridge Street?
Yeah.
It just seemed odd, it was only a few days, and you would think it would be a long term.
Yeah, I think it's usually for like forty eight hours, something like that, yeah. One thing that was interesting that I learned at the end of the meeting today with MBPC on, because on a commercial vehicle exclusion, it's not just numbers, you have to report percentage that are over the large vehicle threshold. And I just assumed that that entailed some kind of manual observer, and they said, no, no, those those pneumatic tubes pick up the weight and impression, and those actually tell them whether it's a car or a truck. And so they said, there's two ways that they do traffic counts. One is the pneumatic tubes that everyone's seeing, the other, I forget the term they use, but it's basically a camera that they set up. And they do in some instances, and and what we told them is we probably might not need this for River Road, but we might very well want this for Ash Street, and maybe we want it for both. Where they set up a twenty four hour camera in addition to the pneumatic tubes, and they do actually have somebody manually reviewing twenty four hours of footage to actually count how many vehicles are above the threshold. And I brought that up with the Ash Street because we're aware that there's actually town vendors who are buying.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Yeah, like trash haulers.
Yeah, I drove by, cruiser had pulled over.
Have the trash, the trash room?
And that seems to be something that's within our control to.
Yeah, well, it should be.
Of course, we're not the signature to that contract.
That's right.
That's another discussion.
Okay, anything else about the MBTA item for the planning board?
Now for the MBTA, this last item on here, honestly, what was up to me would be, I, I don't think it warrants a joint board discussion, but the planning board chair wants to run there. So as I, you know, review the warrants over the years, every time I see a legal bill related to review of, for instance, subdivision docs or condo docs or affordable housing docs related to a development, it kind of rankles me because I feel that that should come out of the escrow account and not out of town's legal budget. And even though I've been bringing this to the attention of various town planners going back years, it's still being put through the town's legal budget. You know, I gather, I haven't talked directly with Ray or with the board about it, but I gather they've told Sue that they think that's what the fees are for, and I don't think that's what the fees are for. I think the fees are for the staff time associated with reviewing these development applications. I view a direct expense like legal as something that ought to be borne by the applicant and.
That's the way it used to be, legal or engineering reviews, they had an escrow and estimated number. That's like when I was on.
Yeah, they don't, they don't set the escrow to account for legal and and so I I don't wanna overstate it because I haven't talked to them directly ever, they've all been through the staff person, but every time I, you know, flag it and I reach out to the planner and say, hey, well, why are we putting this through, you know, why aren't we paying this out of escrow? And it's now been agendaed because I guess it's not as simple as like, or they don't see it as like, I don't, we'll talk about it. I don't think it warrants a joint meeting between boards.
But already meeting.
Yeah.
Calls it ultimately.
Well, they've, they, planning board chair wanted that on the agenda.
I mean, who's calls it legal?
Oh, well, that's.
We don't vote not to pay them with legal funds?
No, I thought Rock was.
I mean, I sign every warrant. The challenge I have, and I have, I've had this for six years, is by the time I see the invoice, the cost has been incurred. So if their planning board's not setting the escrow now in the front end properly to account, not just for engineering review, whatever other review and legal, like what I would say is add a thousand dollars to whatever you asking for escrow, just add a thousand dollars. Maybe add fifteen hundred or two thousand if it's a project that includes a conservation restriction, a trail easement, an affordable housing unit, you know, different things. Each of those trigger lots of pages of documentation, all of which we sent to legal. It all, yeah.
This shouldn't be the town cost, one of the town. Somebody's specific project that they're benefiting economically.
To me, it's an absolute like.
Am I supposed to be getting approval from you to get legal review anyway?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and that did, you know, I mean, recent example, Eagles Nest, on Tuesday of this week, I was sent the two, two documents. There's a third one coming that hasn't been divided yet, but Sue contacted me, said we'd like legal, or she actually contacted me to say, do you think we need legal review? And I said, yes, we need legal review. And I said, you can go ahead and send it, copy me. So she did. Turns out, you know, then she sent a call up today saying she needs it by Tuesday, and I was like, you know, it was to the same attorney that we're working with on four different issues. And it's like, it's just kind of mismatched, cause like, anyway, whatever, in terms of like.
It seems to me that the applicant should be bearing those.
Absolutely. It's a cost to doing business.
Yeah.
And the fees can't anticipate legal or engineering because the fees are set fixed ahead of time. You don't know what legal or engineering.
Well, those fees are supposed to be incremental to cover as Angus said, at that time, you know, the capital legal, at least the hiring engineers, they never did. You were there at the time. That was another big nut that at one point the town was like, oh, we're not paying for engineers to do, to review their document.
Yeah, no, no, that's not what the town operating budget is for. So, so anyway.
So how do you wanna handle this in the meeting?
I'd like to make sure I understand, something could have got lost in translation, you know, and and I'm, I have a call with Ray tomorrow. I'll talk to him. It's about a different topic, but I'll, I'll ask him about this just to try to understand. Cause maybe everyone's in violent agreement.
Yes.
You know, and maybe it's a simple, I don't think so, but.
No, do I?
But.
That would be nice if it could be resolved offline and.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, it's.
That's a real good.
Or or this is the beginning of a conversation that doesn't necessarily have to take place at that meeting.
Yeah, or, you know, it could end up being something where where I'll say, I'm not going to authorize expenses on the legal budget, period. And so for your next project, you better adjust the escrow properly or we're not gonna be able to get legal review of things that really need legal review, which isn't acceptable either. So I I don't really understand what the pushback is. So I'll, I'll talk to Ray and find out.
Right. Rick Hill?
So I, I haven't gotten a, a response from Mark in writing, but I did talk to him. He, he is pretty certain that it was never accepted. There's a period of time in the, I believe Rebecca told me, in the roughly six years after there was all this reference in the older minutes to this needing to be worked out. I think from like two thousand one to two thousand six or seven, there's an absence of water commission minutes. You know, I have a personal look, but that was the sense I got. So there's, you can't prove a negative, but there's no indication that it was ever accepted as part of the water infrastructure. So I asked Mark earlier this week, how, how do you intend to deal with this? And his, his feeling is that the home builder will be required to tie in at Main Street.
Okay.
So which seems to me the right answer.
All right, so we don't have to do anything?
No, I, the, the legal stuff is hurting my head. The fact that they cut out a piece of land, they no longer own it, but because they abut it, they, once the road gets built, they then have ownership of the center line of the road. That's almost like a taking in essence. I sort of thought about my own property, I have a driveway that comes in and in turns it goes up the hill. If I haven't decided to put a subdivision in, that's where your road's gonna be. That doesn't give my neighbor the right to own the center of my roadway at that point. It's a very strange concept, if in fact it's correct, I'm not sure.
It, it is.
No, I think that was because it was under the same ownership though.
No, they weren't, they sold it.
No, no, yeah, but they, it sounded like this, they sold, they sold the subdivision lots, they created the subdivision, they sold the subdivision lots, they still retained ownership though to, to everything, and then they sold the land to Craig.
That's not the way it reads here. They sold that part and somebody developed it, is my understanding. So either way, what happens at that point now, if, if it becomes a town road, we now have legal furniture, could build lots on the other side of the road.
Yes.
That's a very dicey issue too, if it was a bigger road, especially.
Well, reflect back to Harriet Stanley and the plan to put affordable housing.
I'd rather reflect back on that.
Well, but I just, that part is, you know.
Well, all I'm saying is just all of a sudden, so because I have bought Main Street, do I own the center, to the center of the roadway?
No, because it's a public road, but for private roadways, it's.
I bought it almost to the center of private road. That's, that hurts my head.
Yeah.
It's, it is almost like a taking in essence. If you decide to put in, you wanna move that thing one foot in off your property, why so that they don't have an abutment to it? Right? If I was, if I was gonna develop a subdivision, I would never put my road on a property line at this point, knowing what I know. Because you give your neighbor access.
Well, they have rights to pass and repass. There, there's a, I think, an easement by implication or something.
Yeah, that's what it says, yeah.
And, yeah, there's definitely, I just go back to my town planner days, but there, 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 there's definitely like that idea of a private way, the abutment zone in the center line, that, that's something I've been hearing for decades as like, there's, there's lots written about this and we, we can send more. There's definitely no action needed on this, although.
I think it's pretty clear we don't have to do.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a housekeeping matter. I do think it's, it's something that if, if highways been plowing it all these years.
So.
If, I think we either need to, well, they paved it at one time, which is strange. It seems that ought to be resolved, it seems that it's resolved.
Yeah.
But in terms of in practical terms, it should be resolved one way or the other, that the town's gonna either continue to treat it as public, in which case it would be a cost of, yeah. No, it's not. Or say it's private and any prior practice of, and if we're gonna do that, I would, out of respect for the neighbors, one would wanna know.
And when the neighbors, if I'm a neighbor, I'm going to wanna bring this to the town meeting and have accepted as a town road.
Yes, you are.
Now you'd have to have a plan, you'd have to build the standards and all that stuff, so that's, that's a problem. If they came in, then my question is, what are the potential things that the town own? You know, you would pick up frontage, but you own it and maintaining it, paving it, the water. I don't know what are the things the town would then own at that point that you might not think about.
So this was such a big problem in Westford. I'll, I'll have to find it and, and send it around. But we had an unaccepted roads committee that met for, for years. Because in Westford, they had had an enormous building boom. And then, I, I worked there in twenty ten, twenty thirteen, it had an enormous building boom in that part of four ninety five. Then the recession hit, and all these roads were constructed but never got over the finish line. And they, and some of these went back twenty years, cause and and so there was a whole unaccepted roads committee who did an incredible amount of, I'll send out a report cause it's, I don't think we have anything near, I know we don't have anything near that scale of issue, but it was a huge, huge problem. And they put in enormous amount of work documenting what was public, what was private. If it wasn't accepted, why hadn't it been accepted? Was it a granite curb that wasn't put in? But, but tying up these loose ends was an enormous effort, and it, and it was a huge neighbor issue because the people living on the roads were, were furious that they were paying taxes, but the town wasn't, you know, from trash and, and snow removal and so forth. So it's definitely much more than we've needed to do here, but you know, I certainly wouldn't say there isn't other situations like Break Hill Terrace in town. Maybe there isn't, but maybe there is. And.
But as it relates to this specific place, it's not a town accepted road.
It is not.
Can't pave it, can't foul it.
That's right, and yet they paved it and like to.
You're not bound by.
No, no, you're not, you're not. It's more of a perception issue with, with those neighbors.
And then to Chris's point, down at off away to the river, this private road, it's a nice private road. We have Don, Don Dogg was down on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They, they came to us one time and they announced about making it public, but we, we informed them of what it would take.
Yeah, in order for the town to accept it, it would have had, because the town, the town isn't in the butter on that property.
Right.
So there was no question about any town ownership of any portion of the road, and they would have had to upgrade it to town standard.
So the same thing would apply in this case, since we don't need to get. Same thing would apply that, that to make it a public way is way more expensive than what it would be worth to the people who live up there.
Depends on what time horizon, you know, if they have to get a cloud contractor, you know, there's a point at which, but, but you're not wrong. I mean, it's a lot of, it's many thousands of hours, you know, just to do.
And then they have to control enough land to make it so that they can get it, so it's a town acceptable road.
Yeah, yeah.
So will there be communication with the, the residents?
I think there needs to be, yes, definitely. So, but, but, yeah.
They don't want to reply back.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we've never, everything has been, I think, verbal. Like it's more of, you know, it was kind of, Mark was aware, like this is coming to us, but it's not, there's.
I'm pretty good at stop plowing, you know.
Right.
Yeah, Mark is now fully informed as to who takes care of the water.
On the water, yes, I didn't bring him into the, but, but I do wanna share that. I mean, it's not, it's part of the package, it's public, I, I, but I think it's, you know, I didn't wanna distract from the specific question cause it is, it's kind of a lengthy opinion and, you know, could be.
It's still confusing to all of us.
Correct, yeah.
All right, I think they need to hear sooner than later too.
I do too.
Yeah, because they're gonna have the light of a cloth for the winter, you know, start now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, there's a lot of complications there. I mean, if, if whoever the builder is, I don't know if it's being built, if the house that's being built there is being built on spec or it's being built by somebody who's gonna live in it, but it's, I'm sure there's a cost that, that, that they haven't, that they did not previously account for to put in a new garden house.
And then how's that gonna affect the previous one? Did they demolish the house there? Did they demolish the house?
Yeah, I, I. I took a photo while I was out there, you know, four or five weeks ago, once I first became aware, I'll just hand this around cause it, it looks to me like it was perhaps a pre-existing foundation. It doesn't look like it's wholly new construction. Do you wanna just hand it around? Chris, you could probably lean a lot more on that photo than, than I could.
That first floor, maybe?
It looks like it's some kind of.
It was a, it was a single story.
No, no, it's on a stone foundation. Well, the front part is on a stone foundation. And from what it looks like here, this concrete, here, there's a picture of the foundation that looks pretty old and made.
The sun was right at me, so there was a lot of glare, I, I take that into account, but I do.
Yeah, no, you can, you can see, I just wanted to do a quick drive by.
All right.
Oh, okay, interesting.
Very different.
Oh, yeah, he's got a picture of Zillow, it's the original house.
Single, scellery.
Yeah.
Yeah, very, very different.
Yeah, so that's the same foundation, yeah.
All right, uh, next item is, uh, the page school conditions assessment. Uh, for us to get comments by the end of the month, Angus and I thought that perhaps we should set an interim. Deadline, uh, what do you think is a good, if we look at the table of contents, Angus, what do you think is a good, like halfway point? To have reviewed by the next meeting?
Uh, geez, I don't have it in front of me.
Um, by the next meeting, you mean next Tuesday?
No, no, by the fifteenth, two, two weeks.
So, uh, executive summary, existing conditions, investigation, code summary, assessment recommendations, planning options, are you pulling it up, Jim?
Sorry, no. I don't even know. Other, it's gonna share the circuit, you know, back to some, I'm a public, I just look, yes, on the public circuit.
Or I don't know how long the appendices are, should we just do the sections by next meeting and then we do the appendices by the following?
Yeah, look at all that's on the packet, it's like, yeah, that's some of it. You know, I've been just trying to keep up with this now.
Have you, Rick?
I glanced at, but, yeah. And so I'm wondering, you know, just catch up with what we have.
I've got so many, you got the River Road study, you got this, you got.
I know, this, they're waiting on comments, so we've got enough to do it.
Yeah.
So the content summary, I'm not clear on how that's different from the report. There, there are a bunch of comments on that.
They, it's not, it's not, what happens is when you export the PDF, uh, it creates a standalone of just all, all the comments. Those comments are already in the report, so it's really just the same information presented in a different format.
Okay, so for us to comment on this directly. This is a PDF document, so it's, okay, so.
So, yeah, you can do, there's a comment function PDF, which I know you're, you're well familiar with, um. If people don't have the right software and want that, talk to me, uh, we can get you set up with that with Jake. Or if you'd prefer just mark it up in hard copy, that's fine too, at that point Christine, uh, will. Fill those comments and we just wanna get them all in one place, both as a convenience to the consultant and, you know. Respect for their time, but also. That's gonna eliminate duplication because you'll see that someone already flagged your issue, so there's no need to restate it. And ideally minimize conflicting comments. So, you know, if, if one reviewer says this and another reviewer says something diametrically opposite. By having all the comments in one place, it, it allows us to hopefully give the consultant clear. Feedback and not things that then have to be sorted out, cause they're getting different, you know, conflicting direction.
How about if we plan to get through section five, five fifteen? Rest in mind that we can go, that's forty-five pages.
Yeah, I should be able to do that.
Through section five is fifty pages.
Okay. Five pages, my friend. I actually, you.
I gotta follow that too, cause I'm, I've been one of the worst offenders, I, I.
No, no, I'm, I'm worse. I insist. Yeah, um, but I, I am.
Very.
I, I actually would, you, you'd offer it a hard, you'd ask it a hard copy, I actually would like.
Definitely, let's run off hard copies for everybody, Chris, did you get one?
I did, the one was like a mini one though, I don't know what that was, pages of time.
Okay, yeah, probably that. Yeah. So, yeah, let's get them each hard copies, cause even if you provide the comments in the digital, it's, it's. Probably easier to read, just cause they're so dense.
Well, this is gonna be fun, yeah.
But I think you're gonna have a lot of great input, just based on your construction background and. Right with your energy and when you with your facilities knowledge, I, I do think it's gonna be, definitely be a better. Report once, once you've all had your two cents.
All right, make sure you do your homework. All right, anything to say about the correspondence on the social media decision?
It certainly makes me glad that I unpublished my, uh, personal Facebook page. And, oh, quite a while ago, just cause I was like, I wasn't using that, and I was like, but, are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah.
But I don't disagree with the ruling, right, the guy is sitting there advocating and the other guy wants to battle him, so.
Well, and that's, it's all that two-pronged test of, is it being used as a public forum, but, but I mean, I think with this, it's just, it's gonna cause, you know. People like me or others, you know, you, many of us like to really, uh. You know, it, I think it validates the approach we've taken of, of really not jumping in on social media and providing. You know, and getting into the back and forth, um, but I, I would. Definitely think I would want to refer appendixy of our personnel policy, which is our, you know, email and. Social media, like appropriate use, it's an appendix personnel policy, it was approved before I got here. It's not something that had any, any attention given to it in the six years I've been here. So I think this is probably a good opportunity to send that to KP and say, hey, in light of this ruling, anything you might recommend to change, cause. Uh, you know, I, 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 this, you know, while we're saying this is in the packet, if it's something that. Might have implications for others, I don't know, library director, whomever, you know, like they, we should make sure our policy. Reflects.
I mean, is it worth communicating this to staff? I mean.
We could send the, the summary, or we could send their, yeah, we can send a KP thing around and say, we've, you know, we're, we're seeking legal review. To see if this recommends any, uh, changes to our, our existing policy.
And they should just beware of those.
In the meantime, yeah, and caution them in the meantime, in discussions of that type of problem.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there is a way to operate under this, uh, put you on the good side, but you know, things can get really musty and they. So, I mean, you're better off not doing it, anything.
Delete all.
Like I liked in school, Chris, the first thing I did, you got to.
All right, we're done.
I don't use it. I, no, I didn't either, I, I, I use it because restaurants are on Facebook and if you wanna see. Whether restaurants open.
I, I use it in a similar way.
Right, right.
I used, I mean, it's advantageous for me, kids are spread around the world to communicate with them, but then it's, yeah, we'll figure. Make a motion to recess back into executive session.
Okay. Have fun. I'll see you all again. By the way, uh, last time I went up. Speaking of the Sage Center, we had the fan running down there.
Yeah, you told me about how hot it was?
Yeah, so I just cautioned her not to run the fan overnight, it, it was boiling.
The fan itself was hot.
Yeah, I, I touched engine housing and I turned it off. Wow, yeah, so I, I wouldn't use that panel, like, unintentional.
Yeah, what's the worst that could happen?
I'll shut the door.
Okay, thank you. And for anyone, uh, watching remotely, the, uh. Uh, board will recess to executive session, reconvene and open session solely for the purpose of.